Good morning. We're getting started with our meeting of the Regional Transportation Commission.
Angela.
All right, Ms. Maynard.
Thank you, Commissioner, members of the Commission. Your first item is to conduct your first citizens' participation period.
This is the first time set aside for a public comment, and I wish you could provide public comment on an item on today's agenda. Please identify the agenda item, state your names, spell your last name for the record, and please leave your comments to three minutes. Mr. Hennessy.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Dennis Hennessy. I'm just a driver. You guys all know me. That's all I am, is just a driver. I'm coming up here today and I'm having somebody pass out a little gift for you guys. I can remember two years ago when the contractor that we currently have took over Fix Route Transit Operations. Mr. Siegerblum, I distinctly remember how you barked extremely loud at the then-Vice President, which is one of many, or consultants that TransDev brought in, Kevin, and you sat there and very boldly with a real loud bark said, "Well, you better fix this." And Mr. Jones, you chimed in just as well. Later today, in this presentation, MJ is going to speak about fixed route ridership being up. I think that's great. I think it's really great. However, I think we're not being real transparent to the public because the contractor you have is not doing that great of a job, in my opinion. Again, the routes that I run, I'm currently on the Sunset Route, where I went four days last week with better than six hours with no bus ahead of me. I want you to think what those passengers are saying to us drivers when they get on a bus having to sit out there for 12 hours. You know what, guys? These are your constituents. They vote for you guys. They don't vote for MJ and her staff. My problem is, is we're not being transparent to the public. You're not being transparent to the public. There's problems, and there's been problems for two years. Mr. Jones, Mr. Siegerblum, you guys barked real loud. I just passed out little dogs for you. They're little tiny dogs because that's really the bark that's being heard now. And that bark that's there is being muzzled because you guys are ignoring it because liquidated damages are into the mix. So because the RTC is getting a bunch of money back because the contractor's not doing their job, we'll just muzzle it. You know what we need? We need rottweiler barks. We need somebody to tell this contractor, people waiting an hour in 112-degree heat when there should be 30-minute service is wrong. These are the people that vote for you. I had a buddy of mine that did the 119. Again, I spoke with Sabrina. She's got this information. I had a buddy of mine last night on the 119, which has one-hour service. It goes from the south part of town all the way north. He had no bus ahead of him all last night. Once again, how do you think the driver on the bus that's on time is treated? It's already rough out there with the Jimmies of the world, but now, self-inflicting, the answer we get is, we don't have any equipment. One of you people needs to go to these lounges and see what's going on. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hennessy. Anyone else wishing to speak? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and close the first comment period.
Thanks, Chairman. The next item is to approve your agenda. It is in order and ready for your approval.
All right. I don't see any motion to approve the agenda.
Motion approved.
There's a motion to approve the agenda. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is to receive the CEO report, and we're going to begin this morning by recognizing an outstanding operator. So we would like to recognize TransDev Fixed Route Operator Sherdel Marty. So let's watch as our Senior Director of Transit Services Sabrina Glenn surprises him.
Thank you, MJ. Today I have the honor of recognizing TransDev Transit Operator Sherdel Marty, whose dedication and commitment to exceptional customer service truly stands out. Sherdel operates routes 102, 201, 117, and 217 throughout the valley and has driven an estimated 223,000 miles without a single incident. Since joining us in 2013, he has made an impact through his professionalism, reliability, and genuine care for our riders, which does not go overlooked. In fact, a rider recently shared with us that his attentiveness and positive attitude truly enhance the commuting experience, making it both smooth and safe. His efforts do not go unnoticed and are sincerely appreciated by riders like myself. Sherdel's courteousness and outstanding service make a difference every single day. Please join me as we surprise him with the Crystal Bus Award. Hi, Sherdel. How are you?
I'm good. Good work.
Oh, I'm so glad to hear that. So I'm Sabrina Glenn. I'm the Senior Director of Transit for the RTC, and on behalf of MJ Maynard, our CEO, and our Board of Commissioners, we just wanted to acknowledge the years of service that you've provided for the agency and the outstanding customer service professionalism and work that you've had over the years. We've had several individuals call us and just talk about what a great driver you are, how you've helped them over the years, and so we just want to say thank you. Thank you!
RTC does so much for this whole valley. So, you know, it's a privilege. It is a privilege to accept us, and it's a privilege just to live here. This is a great community. Thank you so much. Thank you so much.
Sherdel, are you here today? Please stand up. Looking very sharp in your three-piece suit there.
Thank you, Sherdel. And next, we would like to recognize Nelson Flores, an operations technician with RJP Structure. Let's watch as Alan Hayes, Senior Director of Facilities and Transit Amenities, surprises Nelson.
Thank you, MJ. Today I am happy to recognize RJP Structure's Operations Technician, Nelson Flores, who supports our transit amenities team with on-call emergency bus stop and shelter repairs. Nelson answers the call day or night to replace or repair damaged shelters, benches, and other equipment as needed. His timely response is critical to keeping our bus stops clear of debris and in good condition for our customers. Nelson recognizes the importance of his work and the impact he has on our customers' ability to access safe, well-maintained bus stops in addition to doing a great job. His positive attitude and quick response give our busy amenities team the support they need to manage more than 3,700 bus stops system-wide. We are incredibly appreciative of Nelson's reliability, commitment, and positive attitude 24/7. Now, let's surprise Nelson with the Crystal Bus Award. Nelson, how are you this morning? My name is Alan Hayes, and I'm here with the RTC on behalf of our board and our CEO, MJ Maynard, to provide you today with our Crystal Bus Award. This is in all your service for coming out and helping us day or night. You're always on time, and we appreciate you so much for that.
Thank you, guys, for everything. We are a good team. God is good. God is great. Don't forget to pray every day. RTC, the best.
Nelson, are you here?
Yes, he is. Nelson?
Please stand up. Let's give you a round of applause.
So, Commissioner, if we could ask Sherdel and Nelson to come on down and take a picture with our commissioners. Thank you, Sherdel, and thank you, Nelson. Thanks for all you do on behalf of our Next, we would like to recognize an RTC Superstar of the Quarter. This person is truly a gem in the pair transit and specialized services department, exemplifying dedication, professionalism, and heart in everything she does. From expertly guiding seniors and individuals with disabilities through the ride-on-demand lift programs to driving improvements and Medicaid trip reimbursement rates, her impact is both meaningful and measurable. Her detailed training sessions, collaborative spirit, and passion for team engagement showcase her as a leader behind the scenes. This individual's outstanding service, technical savvy, and positive energy make her a shining example of what it means to be a superstar at the RTC. And our first Superstar of the Quarter is O'Shila Gavo. Don't be shy, O'Shila. Thank you for all that you do. And I'll tell you, it really is the folks behind the scenes, the ones that you never see. They're the ones that make it happen, and every job is just as important as the next. So I really appreciate what she does every single day. So now, on to our second Superstar of the Quarter. This individual exemplifies RTC's core values through innovation, technical expertise, and collaborative spirit. His in-house repair and recalibration of mobile data terminal units have saved the agency tens of thousands of dollars while extending the life of critical equipment, a true testament to stewardship and sustainability. By documenting procedures, training peers, and taking initiative during urgent projects and outages, this individual fosters a culture of excellence and teamwork. His problem-solving mindset and unwavering dedication make him an invaluable asset to the fleet technical equipment team and a well-deserved Superstar of the Quarter. And so our second Superstar of the Quarter is Edsel Bernardino. Edsel, where is she? Edsel and O'Shila, come on down. Take a picture with our commissioners. Amazing team. And last week, the RTC was proud to join Alexander Dennis for the grand opening of the nation's only double-decker bus manufacturing facility in North Las Vegas. And I'm happy to share that there will be more to come in the future with, in terms of manufacturing, the types of buses they'll be manufacturing in this particular facility. The celebration brought together community leaders, industry partners, and elected officials to mark this historic milestone for Southern Nevada's transit and manufacturing sectors. We extend our sincere thanks to all of you, our board members, U.S. Senator Catherine Cortez Masto, U.S. Congresswoman Deetah Titus, North Las Vegas City Councilman and RTC Vice Chair, Isaac Barone, and the many other local and state leaders who attended and supported this exciting new chapter for public transportation for our region. So let's watch a recap of this exciting milestone.
I am so pleased to join you and excited, excited for the future that we are bringing right here in Southern Nevada. Alexander Dennis has been our partner. We started operating double-deck buses here in Las Vegas a number of years ago. This is the only manufacturing plant in this country for these buses.
Not just in the United States. This is the only double-deck manufacturing facility in all of North America.
All of the important parts of Nevada, the customer, supply chain, the government partners, to bring everybody together to say, hey, we brought a new industry here to Nevada.
It's economic growth, prosperity, and it's already provided 120 jobs, and that's just the start.
These are manufactured, assembled by people. Safety's not optional. Reliability's critical, but we also contribute a couple of other things.
And we're building wealth, and we're building communities.
Helping to grow our economy.
Where you can live here, work here, raise a family here.
I often say we don't make much here, except maybe dreams come true. But now I can say, and double-decker buses. So how exciting is that?
RTC has always done a great job, and I think people are going to lean in on it more now than ever.
Public transportation was a good way to get people around the valley. We want to be sure we have it.
So that vision to bring investment, to diversify the economy, it's happening.
Everybody coming together to make this happen. Everybody should be proud.
We're really proud of our history, but we're really excited about our future.
To our new neighbors at Alexander Dennis, welcome home.
It was.
Thanks for wanting to be there.
Again, thanks for all of your support. It's more to come, and we're excited to ensure that this company has what they need, again, just to grow business here in Southern Nevada. So as we do every month, this is, and this is June, by the way, it usually takes, we're usually about two months behind in collecting the data and scrubbing it. But if you can see here, as Mr. Hennessy said earlier, ridership continues to increase. Our on-demand service is up by 37%. The strip service is up by 31%. Residential routes are up a total of 1%. And I will tell you that on the on-demand, it is, we're actually going to go out and do a survey to really understand the demand, where they're going and why they're using it. But in the future, with a sustainable funding source, I think it's a service that we'd like to implement in other parts of the valley. And if you can see, so these are the routes that we've seen a ridership increase. And the top four, the Decatur Route 103, the Ranch with Centennial Hills Route, that's the 106. The Sunset Route, the 212, then the Cactus, Horizon Ridge, Boulder City Route 221, we've seen a significant increase. This is the visual representation of that. And again, many thanks to the operators that make it happen every single day. And then this is just, again, a visual of the deuce transit ridership. The deuce, so we saw about a total of 591,000 trips in June. The year-over-year increase was over 140,000 trips. So not an easy job, and appreciate the operators that provide the service in the resort corridor. And Commissioners, that is your CEO report.
Very good. Any comments, questions? Sounds good. Moving on to the next agenda item.
Thank you. The next item is to receive the Nevada Department of Transportation Director's Report from Tracy Larkin Thompson.
Well, good morning, everybody. All right, we'll get started. The Grand Teton Drive Overpass Ribbon Cutting. On Thursday, July 17, we attended, Mario, and he's in the audience with his orange hat, represented the department, attended the ribbon-cutting ceremony for the Grand Teton Drive Overpass. It was a $40 million project funded by RTC and federal funding, led by the city of Las Vegas within Endot Right-Away. So truly a partnership, but we congratulate on any significant addition to the transportation system. Next, on August 18, Endot will begin a paving project on Sunset Road. The traffic control will maintain at least one lane open in each direction at all times, with most closures happening at night to minimize disruption. And like I said, we just want to make people aware that it will be coming up very soon. The I-215 Preservation Project paving, and it is paving season. It began this month on the I-215 Preservation Project and expected to continue through September. The project area is on the 215 from Las Vegas Boulevard to Windmill Lane. The contractor is LVP. It is for $19 million. On the I-15 South Widening Project paving, we also began paving on Endot's I-15 South project, and this work will take a couple of months. We expect this project to be done by December, and it's a $73 million project being construction by Fisher. And it's widening the freeway and making improvements along nine miles, the I-15 between Sloan Road and Warm Springs Road. And then we also have the northbound paving project near Prim. This has also begun, that open-grade paving has begun. They should anticipate some nighttime delays as we have about four more weeks of paving. And this project is a $16 million project being construction by Las Vegas Paving, and it should be done next month. And then just a couple of last-minute things. One, for those of you who have so thoroughly enjoyed the construction of Tropicana for the last few years, we're finished. The ribbon-cutting will be September 23, and we will be out of that middle of town. That should be worth at least a, yeah, yeah, a whoop, whoop. So also, for those who are just keeping up on it, the construction contracts for Brightline and the High-Speed Rail have begun to be signed, and we will be seeing construction starting in Nevada, going down not only on the pavement, I'm sorry, the depot, the train station, but also on the rail line. So that should be beginning to doing the pre-construction activities now, getting through the environmental part. And then one last thing I just want to let people know, one of the projects that Endot is working on, we are co-hosting with the Nevada Department of Emergency Management and in strong partnership with RTC, a cross-durisdictionsal emergency operations workshop that is bringing together, and is focused on the I-15 and the I-11, and we have the Department of the DOTs, the Ops Centers, Department of Emergency Management, Law Enforcement and Fire from California, Arizona, Utah, and Nevada to basically get better together to better communicate and coordinate in the event of any type of emergency. We're being basically emergency agnostic, but whether it's a fire, a flood, how do we better serve the public and get the messaging out? So we're very pleased on that, and that will be happening the first week of September. And more on that later. That concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Larkin. Any comments or questions? Very good.
Thanks, Chairman.
We'll move on to the next item.
Okay. Next item is to approve the consent agenda, which consists of items 5 through 28. It can be taken in one motion.
Very good. I don't see any motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
There's a motion from Mayor. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you. The next item is to receive information from our legal counsel. As there are no items to discuss, we'll move on to your final agenda, which is to conduct your final citizens' participation period.
This is the second time set aside for public comment. Anyone wishing to provide public comment with regard guarding any matters before the Regional Transportation Commission, please step forward with microphones, state your names, spell your last name for the record, and please leave your comments to three minutes.
Lynn, ATU President, first of all, I had to change flights to be here today to make sure that I seen that man get his crystal bus. Very deserving. Second of all, some issues that we're having, obviously, there are going to be people coming down to explain those issues to you. Obvious issues that we're having with TrashDev, with the fleet going down, people that are sitting there waiting for buses, people that are out there on your service waiting constantly in this heat, while operators are sitting in the yard trying to figure out when they can go out to do their job. Obviously, we have issues with, and my condolences to those that have lost their lives with our training program, right? I've been telling you guys, I've been came up here plenty of times and told you, I've told them, they've cut training down. The issues are vast over the operation of total area, but between service being down for equipment and between operators not getting calls when they know that the bus is having problems, just so that we don't have to answer the call, you have operators that are sitting out there waiting on a call at a layover for 30, 40 minutes. And they're going to come up and tell you this ain't the case, but I have to deal with these calls every day. I deal with these calls every day, you guys know I do. So I think that we need to start looking into exactly what's going on, and how come there's so many buses down, whatever the reason is, and how come the answers and the calls aren't getting answered. And that's about all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lynn. Next speaker.
Good morning. Noah Aster. I am a large part of a talented and dedicated group of operators in this city. Nothing is more frustrating than a leadership team that does not know how to lead. Operators are treated as the enemy by the company. Everything from fair and livable wages, denying part of benefit packages, we're now told you can only use one week at a time. You can't use individual days. My vacation. Lack of respect, transparency, accountability, efficiency, fairness, and probity. Solid training for new drivers, effective leadership, and safe equipment, SIFLY, is non-existent. BOC remains severely lacking. Operators depend on BOC for a litany of issues with our lives. All in BOC should be required to learn the bus in every route we have, just like the drivers, simply not read off the script. Safety issues alone are cause for great concern. Tire separating, unlocking, ceiling panels falling down, non-functioning AC, no horns, buses with top speeds of seven miles an hour, slew of other issues that will remain out of the purview of the public for now. Safety of our passengers is and should be paramount to any pre-mandated schedule or management style or lack thereof. We drive or suffer, but it is the riding public that suffers the brunt of these systematic failures. The residents depend and rely on us to get them to work, school, doctor's appointments, home, or wherever their day is going. Some wait 45 minutes to over two hours for a bus because there is no equipment. Two hours, triple-degree heat. Unacceptable. This is where we're at. RTC is sitting back collecting LDs at the expense of the riding public. There is much more to the city than the three-day tourists. You have to realize that. They come, they go. People live here. People depend on what we do. To briefly touch on security, where are they? I never see them on the roadside drive, ever. I pull into a transit center, I have to find them. The new thing is, you have a problem, you call BOC, oh, security is over here, drive there. I am not doing that. The bus will sit there. Not too long ago, I heard this board say, "We pay you a lot of money. Do better." I say to you, "The operators enable you to receive a lot of money. You do better." Finally, I'd like to thank Henderson, Metro, and Boulder City Police for always being there when I need them, because I cannot depend on my security. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Hennessy.
Hi, Dennis Hennessy. I'm just a driver. It's a broken record because it doesn't seem as it ever impacts. Let me just reemphasize. Let's hear your bark, because it's your constituents. I want to, a couple of months ago, I came up and talked about something that was concerning me, and I'm pretty sure it's concerning you guys. And that's the numbers of accidents that we've had in the last several years resulting in deaths, be it from pastor-on-pastor violence. My big concern is accidents. In the last three weeks, we've had two deaths. Two deaths with collisions, motorcycle. What's changed? I brought this up three months ago. What's changed? You guys probably ought to do some research on what's different. I don't know. I'm not the expert. But is it training? Is it follow-up? Certainly isn't leadership. Certainly isn't leadership from, from the contractor that's there, but something's changed, and you owe it to the riding public and to the drivers and anybody that interacts with these buses to find out if something has changed. You've got a guy on your staff that ran safety and training for Veolia, Keolis, NMV, he works for you guys now. I'm not saying there is something wrong, but maybe he could identify, or someone on your expert staff could identify what's going on different. I've never seen in 15 years the numbers of deaths, death-related accidents, as there's been in the last two years. Clarify a little bit, the dogs, we need rottweiler barks. We need you guys to start putting pressure on this contractor. I've asked for three months now about liquidated damages. I was informed by a staff member today, I don't know what I'm talking about. Well, I've asked, and this is the last time I'm going to ask, I want someone to sit down with me and give me a history of liquidated damages with this company, where it's at year-to-date, and where on your profit and loss statement the public can see, because I don't think they can see. But again, grow some transparency. Thank you for the presentation, MJ. Grow some transparency, let the public know how deficient this contractor truly is. One of their experts is going to come up and tell you, it's all good, though. Bark, guys, bark.
Thank you, Mr. Hennessy. Next speaker.
Hello, folks. My name's Derek Bruin. I am the Senior Vice President for TransDev, and I'm responsible for the fixed route side of the business. Myself and Ashley Cole, at the end of the day, are ultimately responsible for what happens to 17 million passengers that we move every single, excuse me, every single month. That's 17 million opportunities to succeed, that's 17 million opportunities to improve. We work really, really hard, the entire team, to have incremental improvement day in and day out. We use all of our safety techniques, like a system called Lytics, where utilizing G-force, we can tell what an operator is doing relative to running a red light, making a hard turn, running railroad tracks. This is something that we get a lot of pushback from, from staff, right? But we need to hold folks accountable because of those safety issues that even Mr. Hennessy spoke about. So again, we work hard, day in and day out, 17 million people a month, that is a huge task, and we don't take it lightly by any stretch of the imagination. And I am always available to anyone that wants to talk to me at any time. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good morning. MJ, everyone. My name's Francesca Parker. I am an operator for TransDev. I've been an operator for going on six years. I want to address, I'll piggyback off of Dennis and Noah about the, our passengers being outside in the heat for 112, 113 degrees, and a lot of it is coming from our construction. So I get upset when I see a sign that says, this, this project is funded by RTC, because I'm, I'm 25 minutes late. And I'm wondering why I'm 25 minutes late, because we got three blocks that we don't cover on the 206 Charleston Route westbound, and if we're not covering any bus stops, why are we sitting in 25 minutes' worth of traffic? So I called BOC, and I asked that question, and they told me that's what RTC wants us to do. And MJ, you know me, you know I'm a straightforward person, I would come to you myself and ask you if this is what you wanted, because your staff, who's in charge of detours, have us going through 25 minutes' worth of traffic, that we got to sit there and wait for three blocks, when we can turn right on Valley View, left on Alta, left on Decatur, right back on Route, we'll never be late. And the reason why I'm saying this is because I did it, and I called it in, and I wasn't late. But we have people out there passing out with health issues because of this 25-minute delay for three blocks. I'm asking you to fix it, because not only does it make me upset, it makes the passengers upset, and they take their frustrations out on the driver when it's not our fault, it makes me upset, because now I don't get my break when I have to go to the restroom at the end at Red Rock. So I'm asking you not just to fix that, fix a lot of these routes when it comes to construction. If you don't know what's the best option for the drivers to do, get some bus drivers together, who knows? And find out a solution so we can keep our services on time, and not have people out here passing out on bus stops because of being out there in the heat for long periods of time. I'm just asking you, let's not even keep pointing fingers and blame, let's just make a solution. I'm a person, I like to make solutions, I don't want to be the problem, I want to be the resolution to the problem. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Hi, I'm September Tiller. I am a operator for your transit system. I wanted to address some safe, I'm sorry, I'm a little upset because of the lack of safety with this job. The incident did happen, maybe two days ago, with a passenger that is, I'll just call them a bad actor on the transit. He was outside waiting for the bus and picked up a weapon, and then hid it behind the person he was trying to get on the bus with. I was told after all this happened that they're just allowed to get on the bus, but this is someone who's been verbally aggressive and abusive to me, and still I stop every day to pick him up, and give him the opportunity to follow what are the rules and the policies that are on the bus. But I didn't pick him up that day, because I felt very unsafe and uncomfortable, because I know the, I didn't pick him up that day. I passed him and his friend up, they were the only two at the stop. He ran to the, the fourth bus stop, because there's a loop that I have to do, and then was out there and raised that weapon. So I passed him up again. He made a point to bend down and pick up rocks and bust out the bus window. I did not feel safe, I wanted a guard to ride with me yesterday, and I was told, no, that it has to get approved and all these things. But there was a shop steward there, and I did tell her I'd be coming here today, in front of them. And then suddenly, that no, when I showed up, they did have a guard there. But that and the, the condition of the buses, we need new buses. I don't know the contract, not the, well, the, the contract that you have for the, the buses that you have. All the buses that are, that start with 19 and above have issues when you kneel the bus. A lot of times, they won't come out and kneel. You have to get off the bus, you have to shut all power off to the bus, to get the bus to come out and kneel. And they're slow, especially the 60-foot buses, because of the heat, because of being on the road 22 hours a day. And that is my time, but yeah, there's, something needs to be done, something really needs to be done. Can I just say one more thing about, I feel like these companies ignore our safety because of the fines. They want a bus running, they want a bus on a road, if they miss a trip, they're losing money, you're making money. We don't even make living wages, and I've been doing this for seven years and still live with my parents. Yeah, I just, you, something has to change.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to provide public comment?
My name is Larita Seraphin. I've been working for the company for 10 years. To be absolutely clear, despite all of the meetings, conversations, and promises, nothing has changed. The same disrespect, disregard, incompetence, ego, and power trips are on full display. This company continues to ignore real issues, not just for the workers, but for the riding public who depend on us. Us frontlining workers have spoken time and time again, and they've chosen not to listen. But it's not all about failure either. I don't want to bash the company entirely, because I do work for them. But we want to push for action and accountability, and that's something that they, they don't practice. We like them to end the culture of disrespect, and if possible, establish a direct line between workers and the RTC board. We'd like to hire and properly train drivers. Please look into the training department, because I understand that there are certain things that trainers are told to do, but the outline for said department is absolutely Maybe a third-party audit for the sake of having transparency in our leadership, that would be amazing, because what we're told versus the actions that they have is absolutely horrible. Excuse me, I'm a little nervous. It's, it's absolutely horrible. As far as our Bus Operations Center, and their direction to continue to have us drivers continue en route, knowing that it is against the DOT rules, or safety rules, or even rules of the company, these new drivers don't have that pushback to say, no, I'm not going to do this, it's unsafe. They feel like they're going to lose their job, they feel like they're going to be reprimanded for something that's not even close to being their fault. And these are the things that we need from you all and the company. Have a great day.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to provide public comment? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and close the second public comment period, and we are adjourned. Thanks, everyone.